Well, this is good for the meeting and presented by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Long, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. All right. So are two items to be added to the agenda due to not having a meeting at the beginning of March. One item being a request to have a local home ceremony on March twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-four. And then the other one is a request for a temporary technical license by the Eagles.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Long, all in favor? Any opposed? Request from Project Graduation, five K running wall.
That's us. I'm not sure what we need to do.
Oh, just share of information.
Just share, okay.
You stay in there or?
Okay, we have the map of the route and Brandon and Paul Hill are going to be helping with the route along with having people at the intersections to direct traffic and we're going to kind of mock the Zelia five K and mark the road, the trail of how we're going to go. Do you guys need a copy of?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to have.
Okay.
What was your name again?
Erica.
You get his name here and I'll give it to him first. Chief Hope, is any problem with that?
No, sir.
I'll move to approve that request.
Second, motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Any opposed? Discussion regarding downtown parking. I know we had this discussion in a meeting past and one of the issues was that, as Chief Hope has pointed out, the citation amount is pretty much non-existent. So I had Teresa and Ashley do a little research on it. I messaged Mary and she's going to get some information. She's not here tonight, but she's going to get some other information as to what other municipalities are doing. And so I wanted to bring that to you all again for discussion. Do we want to, what do we want to do with the ordinance? Do we want to keep it in place? Do we need to amend it to where the fines make it worth pursuing ordinance violations? Eric, what's the difficulty with enforcing this ordinance?
Well, you can't chalk tires, so that's why everybody went to the meters is what we found out with all the other municipalities. Basically, it's up to you guys what you want to do. But right now our ordinance is like a, you could, the problem is people that they park there for, could be there for a day or two at a time and the fine is like two dollars. So, I mean, they're just going to stay there and pay the fine, two dollar fine right now because I think the ordinance is extremely old. Probably from the seventies or? And y'all have a copy of that, I'm sure.
So what other municipalities it does, instead of a ticket, it says it's an ordinance violation? And what's the ordinance penalties against Teresa?
It could be up to five hundred and ninety days.
Or ninety days in jail. Obviously, the judge would set the penalty amount. It's not going to be jail time for parking violation. Probably not be five hundred dollars.
I want to see what you like, you.
Do we want to, what do we want to do? Because right now we're not forcing it because there's just no reason to. People are just going to pay two dollars a day essentially as a parking tax. It's their last bit of term, but do we want to stick with it? Do we want to pursue something that's going to be a deterrent for that? Do we want to offer businesses an ability to lease a space and put a sign up and tell non-customers? I mean, I don't know what all we can do.
But what we do with our research, we'll make most communities then. My ordinance violation, pretty much everyone around this state doesn't understand they're delivering violation. They don't have a parking.
We can't chalk tires and it's two hour parking limit. I mean, how are we going to know they've been there more than two hours? How we know they didn't leave and come back?
Right.
Without parking meters.
Right.
We have to keep them armed.
Our place, we have only business, we got three in the park in front of it.
I know that that's an issue with some locations. That business owners are parked in front of it. You know, personally, if I was a business owner and I was concerned about it, I would want to take up some of the premier parking, but I know other people think differently and also know that there's construction behind there too, behind a couple of buildings. And so I know that the building to park behind some of those places is a little scarce, but?
But we don't know what that is.
No.
No, back there, so we don't. The only parking we have is in front of it.
Correct. What about cameras there? We had cameras, would that be enough to constitute an ordinance violation?
Yeah. Yep.
That's the only way I see it, the police have either cameras or parking. They can't sit up there. He has a time to see if somebody's been parked there for two hours.
I think a parking meter has a negative impact on local businesses. Mary?
Yes, sir. We have a city of parking officer here tonight that's going to talk about a different issue, but I just asked him, like, what are you guys doing with your parking, especially in the downtown? Most of them guys don't even have parking books. They don't mess with it either. I mean, it's just kind of an issue where?
Our fines are extremely low too. It's ten dollars for a parking violation and we run into the same problem in our downtown area where it is two hour parking. But as what the Alderman said, unless we sit there and watch them with a timer, you know, we can't say if they've been there for ten minutes, two hours and ten minutes, and that's just not a good use of our manpower considering our call volume.
Right. See, that's the other thing too, is like, in the grand scheme of things, is it something we want to continue to pursue, right? There's an ordinance in place and we're not forcing it, so for some business owners, that's frustration, right? Because cars aren't moving like they should.
If we're willing to take on the expensive cameras for parking, cameras, I think would be the best job to take. It's multi-purpose, you can see anything, detect, I mean, people almost get in those crosswalks all the time.
Right. Who's going to sit there and watch the camera?
Well, they could go back and review it, yes. No, I wouldn't want them sitting there watching it, yeah, it'd be no different. Sitting on the sidewalk and watching it. We would have it if there were complaints, we would have it laid to stand on where we could give them, maybe give them a warning and say, we've got video in your parking here from eight a.m. until four p.m. we get off. That's violation of our ordinance, we have video footage of it. Obviously, if we went that route, it'd be worth two dollars.
Oh, yeah.
And we're working to that. I don't have any more answers.
I'm not sure it's all a handful, this building.
We want to have a handful of parking lots.
Has the city thought about talking to any of the landowners that has, that actually owns the parking lots? Or, and try to actually maybe upgrade them or something and be able to maybe? If we asphalt them and then redid the lines and everything, we'd probably get more people back there structured instead of?
The Bill Banks events that are parking?
Mm-hmm.
That we've, correctly leased that area for both parking. As long as they don't have an event where they close, it's, anybody can park there.
Right.
So there's what, fifty-ish spaces maybe? There's a lot of spaces there. So somebody who called today, I was like, well, hey, just so you know, so that's not something, maybe we could have advertised it better, but that's essentially an overflow that we have because, you know, they paved it and, you know, we've leased it and we went and put lines and stuff like that for it. So if any business owners want to talk, they can call City Hall of James and affiliate. We can have those discussions, right? So it's not just a one-sided deal here, like it's a community and if anybody wants to help, I have a way. We'd love to, love to take that conversation.
I just know if it was prettier and restructured a little bit, lines, you know, somebody actually mapped it out better, there would probably be a lot more room for parking behind a lot of downtown.
Absolutely.
We check on getting some signs for that parking lot. We're going to say that says free parking. I don't see it, there's a lot there. There was an event last weekend where people parked all across the street, but nobody would park in it. I think we need some signs that says free park or public park, something.
That's what we're trying to do with the downtown revitalization, is get some wayfinding signs and points of parking and stuff like that.
Craig, you have your hand.
I have a question. Maybe a suggestion, but I know that it's common knowledge that it's only a two dollar fine parking. I also understand, you know, with Chief Hope is it's not a good use of their manpower to spend a bunch of time on something that's issued. However, I think that if we do visit it in ordinance and it's made public knowledge that we do have this in effect, whether or not we're going to force it or not, but the chance of facing up to a five hundred dollar fine, in my opinion, is going to be a big deterrent. And if we're more public with the fact that we've got seventy-three parking places, then it's a forty-one second walk from that parking lot to anywhere downtown, I think that we might take a big bite out of this problem.
We had already talked to a lot of those residents that parked there and they agreed to move. So it's like if you let the business owners park there, you know, what's going to keep those residents from parking there too? And that took up that whole corner.
Well, and one of the things, when I was reading the ordinance, it says from six a.m. to six p.m. I think that's a lot wider than it really needs to be. So if we're going to revisit the ordinance in general, I think that we really wanted to make what is an acceptable timeframe, right? Like, when does downtown really start getting busy and parking gets congested, right? When does it become an issue? I think that that would be another thing too, because I think honestly, it's too light of a berth from six a.m. to six p.m. You know, I mean, I could be wrong, but I'd say eight, nine o'clock and then go somewhere four to five. Because then most of the, most of the businesses like Mr. Woods here, his office is closed around that time. And so there's a few restaurants that those people start coming in for dinner. So, you know, parking starts getting utilized for that. But I think if we're going to revisit this and move it towards an ordinance violation or whatever we want to do with it, I think that we should look at change, updating some of that stuff too, to be more relevant for the situation.
So then you're giving those drag events that live in the parks, if they want to work before eight o'clock, they're in the park. I guess that's the idea. So then when James has to clear the snow every morning, you go in, you get the pile around four o'clock. And then they can have an ordinance violation if they don't do it.
I mean, I mean, I'm not trying to be cute, but at the end of the day, like, if they hadn't parked there, right? They know what the ordinance is, you haven't done anything.
If they're leaving at seven thirty in the morning and they're not getting there till seven thirty in the night, they're not, they're not violating.
Right.
If he goes in and clears snow at three o'clock in the morning, they're in their parking lot.
It snows like twice a year, so it's not a big of a deal.
Well, again, I'm just, I'm just kind of talking out loud and thinking, like, if we're going to revisit it, I think we should revisit some of the night turns over there. Is six to six still applicable or should it be nine to eight or whatever it happens to need to be that benefits the businesses? Because if we're going to begin at least attempting to enforce it in some way.
White truck runs out, they just can't make anything. They're all the time.
I think signings would be important.
But he's not going to park over there and walk all the way there because he won't park in the back walker.
He's an older guy, he's had his stroke.
We had some signings on that public parking lot.
He owns the whole block.
Little things we can do to help alleviate it.
So would, would it be a good use of Mary's time to review some other city ordinances and things and present something at the board meeting in the end of March to do an ordinance amendment?
Yeah, cities comparable to us.
Yeah.
Places like that.
All right, another one of my topics. So discussion regarding disc golf, I say it's my topic. There's been, it's been two years, we've had a lot of people reaching out wanting to see disc golf brought to better town. Last year, a group called Disc Mania, they want, they would love to be involved in the design. So I handed out the design there. I don't have a whole bunch of copies, but maybe up there, it's curious, there's a map out here, what they laid out. It's about twenty-eight acres there behind the sports complex that they let, mapped a, what they described as a championship level eighteen hole disc golf course. Last year, the number for the equipment was twenty-eight thousand dollars. And that would not include kind of free and clearing and stuff like that. There's a large volunteer organization that takes care of the one up in Park Hills. It's already said that they would be more than happy to come and help put their own work in, much like the guys did here for pickleball. There's a group of guys come in, they do three holes at a time. And so the Parks Board discussed this and they're kind of burnt out on it in a sense because they're like, it's been all talk. And so they said that they would be more than happy to take action to start to make this happen because we believe that we can fund a large portion of this on private donations by sponsoring the holes. A hole costs about twelve hundred, fifteen hundred dollars each year. And the way that other disc parks go is when you sponsor, it's a lifetime sponsorship. So it would not necessarily be a large ask to say, you pay for the whole hole, you get the whole sponsorship. So the Parks Board wants to basically, the purpose of me bringing it up tonight is that would the board support this location? Doesn't have to necessarily be that layout, but would they be okay with picking that location if we decide to go with it? The walking trail, ironically enough, that we discussed last time, would actually run along right there where hole eighteen begins down along, and then they have hole seventeen listed there along the creek. Be an interesting dynamic there if this is something that we wanted to do. Me personally, I would like to see over half of it funded before I'd say we want to get involved in it. I don't see that being an issue. I know that there have been several companies, what I first mentioned, is the idea of it a year and a half or so ago, I had businesses out of Farmington reaching out to me that they said, I don't care what it costs, I want to sponsor a hole. And so the Parks Board said that they would essentially, if they get enough things to say, yes, the board is going to support this, they would obviously talk to our local businesses first, but they also understand that local businesses get hit up for a lot donations and sponsor this and pay for that. And so, but they didn't want to slap anybody in the face by running a department in for sponsorships before talking to people locally. And so there, this group, again, this is all a big gift. If we went with Disc Mania, they have a website that lists all of their courses. This would be the only course in the entire state of Missouri and it would be the only course between Chicago in about the middle of Oklahoma, where there's about eight in each one of those areas up there. It's a huge growing sport. I know, like, when I showed you all this, the trajectory and how it's continued to increase, you can go down to Dollar Tree and buy a couple of frisbees and go play with your kids. It doesn't have to be one of the ridiculous price outdoor activities. But the Parks Board is just asking, if they're going to put in the work, would the board support it? And if so, how much money do you all want to see them raise to where the city's like, okay, we can, we can now get behind this and start to put action in?
Trail that we've been talking about. We cooperate that.
Like this was, was it a path up here?
We can, this is the, this is the area that they really liked and, and if we give them a certain way to utilize that land, so that money is also the design, right? The company will design the layout for us, so they'll, whatever the path is, they'll make the recommended path. And this isn't a clear-cutting operation, right? Part of the challenge of this particular sport is your mature trees stay. You really just cut the underbrush, you come through the brush hog and, you know, some tree trimmers and stuff like that. You trim some lower limbs on smaller stuff and you leave your big, healthy, mature trees and allow the course to have its own unique character. It's not like a golf course where you go through and you just blast the whole thing wide open and you leave a couple of trees. It's, it's very conscious of the environment that they set it in.
The lifetime sponsorship, I want to do because I want to hear that real good. If that dies, some business wants to move in there.
Well, I think that if, I think that whatever it is that we want to do in sponsorship, it would be one of those things where if you did a lifetime, then there would be a clause in there that if a business longer, if a law exists, it becomes available.
I think you can do a ten-year sponsorship because in ten years, you're going to have to go in there and do some maintenance. Stuff's not going to last forever.
Right.
And do another ten-year sponsorship, maybe to keep up with the maintenance of it too.
I know that, go ahead, John.
I just, regarding the set amount of time on our sponsorship, I can tell you as a business owner, I won't sponsor anything if it's going to have a limitation on it. That's just, that's just me. If I'm going to spend my money, it's kind of like the baseball field. No offense to anybody who set that in, but I don't want to pay X amount of dollars for three years and then somebody else come out and outbid me, right? So I just, I hope you guys would think about that just in the future. I know it's a way to make money, but it's nickels and dimes. I mean, you're talking, if you're talking fifteen hundred dollars in ten years, like, if we can't raise that type of money somewhere else, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We're just, you're kind of cutting, cutting hairs here. So that's just, I just, just from, from a point perspective of an owner of a business, I just would want you guys to take that into consideration.
Thank you for that.
So what's the, what's the total cost to you now?
So, so again, they gave us the price last year, twenty-eight thousand dollars covers nineteen baskets. So you have a practice hole essentially like on a normal golf course. And then you have the eighteen baskets that are through there. It covers the tee box materials. So you, they prefer that you do a concrete pad, so that stuff is there. Concrete pads last a lot longer. So some places do turf, but the turf wears out and that's upkeep that you're going to have way more than every ten years because that turf will wear out. But it's, the biggest cost is just the, and then you get signs. So like on the sign itself, it'll have a shape, just like a golf course, it'll have a shape at distance. And then further down, you set a, I don't know the exact diameter, but you set two or three holes in the ground and then you padlock it in place. And so if there's a tournament or something, somebody can go out there and move the pin location like you would on a regular golf course. So you have some steel tubing or something like that. Your biggest cost is all the equipment. I mean, your concrete, you're going to have, it doesn't work its location, you're not going to try to act there. So you're going to have to have probably a generator and mixer or something to kind of mix it right there. But you're talking small pads, you're not talking anything enormous. And there's been a lot of people said that they would volunteer to see this stuff happen too.
So it's a part of working, give at least fifty percent of the cost.
It, they'll need more than that. I didn't hear him say that, but okay.
I mean, I think it's a good idea. I think it's something that's progressive enough that it makes the town, you know, I mean, we built a sports complex and how many tournaments have we brought in with a sport complex? Not a ton, right? So I think something else that along the lines of that that's out there and, you know, a walking trail, this is the first I heard about a walking trail, I think it's a great idea. I don't think you'll be able to incorporate it, but if you can make it the outline of the, of the complex or the acres of the golf course, I think it'd be a great utilization of space.
All right.
Well, you don't think fifty percent's enough?
Where are you going to come up with other bits?
You want to have commitment for a hundred percent of it?
Where are you going to come up with the other money? I'm just asking. Well, I'm, that wasn't my question, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, is some of that?
You got to send your transportation guys out there to do the work.
No, that's right now. That's no labor, that's no labor, that's just the material.
Less than we, or the labor we supply.
Which James has said in the wintertime, late fall wintertime, when the, when the grass cutting slows down, it would be a good opportunity to get some of our guys on it when they don't have as much grass here. So it would be something that, you know, if we planned it out well, wouldn't have a huge impact on labor needs, right? Because worst time you want to do this is the middle of summer when everything's blossomed and full, right?
But you still have to pay them guys.
Right.
You have to pay the transportation guys. That's where we're struggling at. I mean, the transportation guys are helping your water plant out, your sewer plant, your trash pickup, you know, the water department itself, or the water guys itself, and they're not getting anything. And we can't fix our streets because we don't have no money coming in to transportation.
Maybe if they could give commitment to fund a hundred percent of it, then we could provide the income later.
Okay.
Right, I agree, but I mean, I think we just need to know more than?
Well, and one of the things that's been discussed, because with a few people have talked about, they all want to hold one. So like, you could price certain holes a different price too, and that's where I think the Parks Board is going to want to make recommendations too. So they, they just want to know that if they're going to put in the effort, that the board is going to support it if they give it to the level that you guys are acceptable with, right? So that's, that's their thing, like, hey, you give us a goal, if we think we can obtain it and the board says, yeah, we should be able to do that.
And what takes it to maintain it throughout the year? I mean, do your fairways get mowed or you just?
They sit, well, like in Park Hills, it's part of the park itself. A lot of times in these wooded areas, if they get utilized, I mean?
Get beat down.
They get beat down, right? So, I mean?
We still have to go up there once or twice a year in these.
Probably a little bit.
Travers.
Right, you're not going to walk away from it, right?
Wasn't there, sorry to butt in here again, but wasn't there, wasn't there a group out of Farmington that, that keeps the one in Farmington mowed down? Like it's, and, and they were, they were willing to do it down here, if I'm correct?
It's been a little bit, but yes, there's, there's the ones, one of the courses up in Park, I would think it's the Park Hills, but I think that they mow that one, that group does. Because I know a guy I go to church with, he's part of that group and he's talking about having workdays for it. So it's, it's a lot like pickleball. These guys are, these men and women that are all about it, they're very passionate about it. And so, again, I don't, I'm like Eddie, like, I don't want to throw money at this if, if we're going to have to throw a whole bunch at it, right? So, I mean, if we get to the point where they're like, hey, look, I've got this eighty-five percent funded, I'm struggling to get the last bit of it, then I think we can still have a conversation. But if we tell them a hundred percent is the goal, that's the goal, we'll see how close we can get. And if we only get to fifty percent, then hey, we don't need to do it right now, right? So. Yeah, no sponsorship or, or a grant comes available for something along these lines. But, okay. All right, discussion regarding the Memorial Garden. So I know that Craig and Don are here, you guys have been the champions for this. So the Parks Board discussed this at the meeting and their greatest concern is that by doing it there at the tennis courts, every several years, there's a flood that reaches that area. And so the Parks Board in their meeting, they said they support the idea of it. They do not like the location because of the potential damage that could be wrecked from a flood in that area. They specifically said that they think it would be better suited at the sports complex or at Memorial Park or at City Lake. I think it's less likely to get vandalized at City Lake and the sports complex than Memorial Park. But I know that you guys have, you know, an idea of how many visitors it could bring. And so we want to pick the right place. And it would not be out of character to have something like this at a sporting complex because if you've been to any across the country, we've all seen them, right? The one in Perrinville is right in the middle of their big park area. So out there, we get a lot more people seeing it. You got, when you're parking, you have the handicap accessible for the most part.
And that's, Don and I spoke and that we would love to see it at the sports complex. You'd be able to see the flagpoles from the highway. I mean, it'd be great for whenever the guys ride to the wall, they go up the highway and park right there and they continue their trek through town through the square. I see zero negative with having a sports complex.
Yeah, I agree.
So I think what would be good for you guys to do is kind of find a couple of places up there you think that would be great and give us that drawing like you did the first one.
We actually have a spot that we kind of worked out. I can't use this map, but if you, you guys have this map. Right, in this little, in this little, this little area right here between the concession stand and where the soccer field starts, that's kind of where the tri-
the concession stand and where the soccer fields start, that's kinda where the trail is gonna be, gonna go through. So we thought for folks that are coming from, so the lake, the open edge at the memorial garden, or the other way, begin at the memorial garden and go through. So that spot right there, right off the sidewalk between the concession stand and where the soccer fields kinda start is a little.
Look at your picture, John.
Yeah.
Yeah, on, on some kind of rendering and, and, uh, yeah, the parks board loved the idea, I know you guys weren't able to make that one, they really liked it, they just.
Yeah, I didn't know, I don't think, yeah, I mean, that would be a horrible situation. You know, to have that, all these veterans' names on, on plaques and stuff and then it gets destroyed by water, that would be terrible. Sports complex, never even, I never even thought about it. If I would've known that was an option, I would've been crawling all over that from the get-go.
All right, thank you guys. You guys have any more questions on that? Okay. All right, a request for approval for infield renovations, the baseball field and sports complex from Pollock Landscaping LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seven dollars. I'm sorry. Sorry. You gotta throw something back there. Uh-huh. Request from the Zayo board to have the Zayo festival May second through the fifth. I'm sorry about that, J C.
Well, she, uh, she wants to talk to you about.
No, you go first, then I'll talk.
Uh, well, we're gonna have it. And I want permission to, like we always do, shut the streets down. Uh, we'll have to shut the one down from the bridge to Church Street on Friday morning, cause that's when all of our crafters and everybody comes in. And then the car show will be Saturday around the courthouse, if that's like it's always been. And I just wonder if, what she's gonna talk to you about, if we might wanna shut the street down all the way down to the post office. You know, if you're gonna have people walking down through there. So, like I said, it's gonna happen. It's, it's all planned out pretty well. And I just need permission that we can shut the streets down and go with it. And I know Eric's on board with it. He's. I, I've got a minute, the police department and everything's always been all good to us about having officers down there and everything. Uh, I just hope we don't have. I mean, it's sixty, sixty-two.
No, isn't it sixty-three?
Sixty-one, three?
I know, sixty-three.
It's been too long. I think I've been on the board too long. But that's why.
I'll second it. Motion to approve by Alderman Miller, second by Alderman Schenkel, all in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, I know you have something to share still, so go ahead.
Um, so we were also wanting to see if we could get approval to use the M C S D lot so that way we could expand like food trucks and things like that for the festival. We do have a lot of congestion down at the park with food and we have so many people reaching out to us that want to be food vendors, but we just don't have the space for them. And we don't wanna lose that connection that we could make for them in case our people who are so loyal to us who come every year, um, wouldn't be able to sometime in the future. So we were just wanting to see if we could use that to expand, uh, probably set up Friday night. Saturday would probably be the biggest day during the car show and then also probably Sunday during the parade that would be useful too.
So, uh, we will talk to the Bill Banks Event Center and make sure that they don't have anything on those dates.
I did talk to Brooke already.
Okay.
And she said their calendar's free, so.
That, that's the reason I'm wondering, we don't wanna shut the street down at the post office, cause you're gonna have people going in to the food area stuff. And we don't need cars coming up there trying to turn around.
Motion to approve that too?
That's part of the request.
Put it all together.
It's the same request that's been there every year.
All right, now onto number six. Sorry, thank you so much. All right, request for the approval for infield renovations, the baseball field, sports complex from Pollock Landscaping LLC in the amount of twenty-nine thousand four hundred and seven dollars.
But we don't do that, baseball field's not gonna be very playable.
It is not playable right now.
It's, I was just out there, it's not, it's, it's way too chalked out. The ball comes off, it's a indoor grass, it'll pop up.
I bet all the girls drunk in one of the times with a gun, I'll make the gun first.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
I'll second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Schenkel, all in favor? Any opposed? Request from Settle to purchase two yard dumpster lids in cash in the amount of forty-seven hundred eighty-eight dollars from Mouser Steel Supply Incorporated.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Okay, motion to approve the request by Alderman Jones, second by Alderman Long, all in favor? Any opposed? Request to repave tennis courts in the amount of forty-eight thousand five hundred, seven, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-six cents from M C.
We at the school approached about having to take resurface and remodel and, and this was the two bids we got.
It's probably not paid for.
They're gonna pay for half of it.
I'm there to line it for pickleball, so.
How long have they been since they moved to seven?
I'm gonna tell you ten years, but I might be way off, so it's been a pretty good while.
I think it's been that long.
That floodwater does, it's wrong.
Yeah. Yeah, the last big flood that got in there, that's what caused the crackups bad.
The school is gonna pay half of it.
Yeah, there really are courts, they're the ones that use them, so. That's what we done last time, do was split the cost for them.
So is this a, this material, is it specific to that or is it just a generic basketball kinda thing?
No, it's actually, it was on there. They gotta fill all the old stuff off the seams, they've got some kind of corporate style tape that they lay down on them. It's a little bit more of a process than much.
Eric, you pay the other half since this is gonna be pickleball court too.
Was it Harold?
There's only one that uses them, the tennis team. I don't ever skate, I also.
I see, I see some people down there later in the evenings when the weather's nice with tennis, actually. It's not, it's a lot, not near the void that you have by the rock wall.
No, I agree, absolutely. I mean, I think that all can be a stipulation, if they're not on the stripe, then they pay for all of it. It's not gonna be striped for pickleball.
Hey, Travis.
Yes, sir.
Has anybody gotten a bid on like what a new court would cost? Is it way more than fifty thousand dollars? It is?
Everything is so expensive.
At, at the Farmington, we, uh, at the school district, we went in half where they're, at the Inker Park. They was, uh, it was about four hundred some odd thousand for those tennis courts that are there. We went in half at school district.
Where in the world are they getting these contractors from?
Eight.
Yeah, we wouldn't even need.
But with that number, if we hire it out, it's gonna be a prevailing waste job because of the price tag that's attached to it, so.
I just, I mean, if the reason that the ones down there are getting disintegrated a lot quicker is because of the water, right? Assumingly, is there a thought process that we don't look at a bid that you build it at sports complex where it would never? You know what I mean? I'm just throwing it out there.
Why the soccer fields are out there.
Yeah.
Right, I'm just saying, like, I mean. Or even, or even resurfacing the one over there at the rock wall, like, I don't know what the, it's the same amount of courts, am I correct? It's two? Or no, do we have four over here?
A million dollars, I'll sell them like far.
Well, that has been resurfaced. Maybe we saved that last year, but it's pickleball courts. There's six courts everywhere. You drive by there.
I'll move and give them.
It's a good theory, like you say, I know they, uh, build, you build a lot of courts in, or was it eight?
Yeah.
Six courts, something like that, two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is about ten million.
I just didn't know if there was any kind of grants for like a new construction, something. I just, I just, just didn't know.
The other court wasn't so bad until we had that last big flood, water came up, it caused all the sandals.
I'd make a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion. We do have, we have to line them for pickleball.
I'll second. All right, uh, motion to share the cost for the school, provided that they have dual purpose with pickleballs by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Polley, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Request to purchase for electric. Uh, request to purchase from electric to purchase utility poles from Bridgewell Resources LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand nine hundred and two dollars.
Uh, what this is, just for restock and that? Trying to get them before hurricane season and that.
Because that's budgeted?
Yes.
Are you wanting Bridwell or are you wanting DeSoto? There's a matter.
Did I put Bridwell?
I think you put DeSoto on it, it's been on the, on the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, it, uh, DeSoto is the most bid.
Okay.
Yeah, and we get more poles from them and from their price.
Quantities for higher for the same price.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, I was reading those lessons. I need to turn the page over.
I'll make a motion to approve that request for DeSoto, second. Motion to approve the request for DeSoto by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Any opposed? Request from Burns McDonald, payment number three in the amount of eight thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents for the airport pavement maintenance.
Move to approve that request, second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Request from Burns McDonald for payment number four in the amount of one thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-six cents for airport repayment.
Second motion to approve that request, second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Any opposed? Number twelve, request to set spring cleanup for April fourteenth through the twentieth.
Second.
Motion to approve by Alderman Schenkel, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Any opposed?
You wanna, you wanna elaborate on spring cleanup? So there's no confusion?
I don't even know. You can bring it to the, the transportation for free. Call it yourself, and if we have to go pick it up, you gotta come to city hall and buy a ticket or whatever.
If you live in the city limits, you can call to the transportation for free if you live in the city limit and you have to show proof that you live in the city limit. And you can get it picked up curbside and it's ten dollars to come in to city light and waters, pay your ten dollars, they fill out your information, we give the list, the guys a list of names. You have to be in here on the Thursday before spring cleanup to get on that list, because we give the list to the guys on Friday.
Have to tap it out at the appropriate time.
And yeah, they're tapped out by your trash can, we give you a paper that says what you can and can't put out. Oh, God.
Feel like it's April first, I'm gonna go. Request for emergency repair for, for ask man tank for the water plant for a municipal equipment company in the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars.
This is, this is an emergency thing, the tank they got, they've got a crack in it. It's got some really bad stuff in it, it breaks, it's gonna wipe out a whole bunch of stuff.
Which tank is that?
What's it gonna be on? It's inside that building.
Myos.
They can run it half, a quarter to half in the winter, but during the summer it's gotta run in full and the dress splits at the top, and it's a plastic tank, so. Is the way, way like it's wet, so.
I'll move to approve that request, second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Schenkel, all in favor? Any opposed? Request from Brock Miller for paid request number nine for fire station project in the amount of three hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
If you guys haven't been down there to look at it, you know, be down there and look it over a little bit. I know you've been down there. Getting a lot closer.
And you can find more and more of our own.
I've never actually heard of it, I just keep hearing it.
So, uh, whenever our last scheduled payment is, I think that we need to make sure that we have a good walkthrough and if there's any items in there that definitely need to be corrected, then we're gonna be able to that payment until they make them right. What, what's the, John, do you know how many tolls, kids, or prisoners there are?
For this one, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve that request, second.
Motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Any opposed? Uh, discussion regarding purchasing cameras through Flock Safety Chief Hocus.
Yeah, so that's why I have Officer Ryan Miller from Farmington PD here tonight. Uh, we've been, at the chief's conference, we were talking about this last year. Uh, it's the new, it's, I'll let him explain what they do, but basically we talked to a salesman and they showed us their pitch and then I've talked to actual department that have had them for, you know, six months or so and talked about a little bit of what they're doing and how it's changing the way they do business. So Ryan, if you wanna, sure, can I take my spot there?
All right, gentlemen, like you said, my name's Ryan Miller, I'm a police officer with the city of Farmington, I've been doing this for twelve years. The flock camera system, I wanna start by sharing with you a success story that actually touches here in Madison County that extended due to our jurisdiction and beyond. In August of last year, there were some credit card skimmers that were installed at the Casey's gas station on South Industry Avenue. We ended up getting about twenty-five different citizens that reported this to us and all of the, the transactions on their cars were happening in Kansas City deserving. A day later, a Madison County Sheriff's Department officer, he actually caught someone that was trying to install these same devices on a command store here in, in this county. So the long and the short of that was they got picked up in Cape Girardeau, brought up to Madison County, we learned a little bit about who they were. With the information that he developed, I was able to find a vehicle description and a license plate. The problem was, when they were in Farmington, they were in a different car. So what I was able to do is, using a surveillance video from Casey's, it was a Silver Ford Expedition, I was able to log into our flock camera system, and I wanted to see every Silver Ford Expedition that came into Farmington in the timeframe that they were there, which was an hour. I came up with two, one had outstate plates and it was a rental car. Come to find out, this vehicle was rented by the same people that Detective Lumsford arrested. The short of that is, is that their crime spree went from Florida, where they came into the United States from Cuba, all the way up through Georgia, Alabama, Kentucky, Missouri, and up into Kansas City where they ended, three Cuban nationals, so many cases between here and there, that it ended up being picked up by the United States Secret Service. Now, I tell you that because that kind of investigative work is darn dear impossible without this kind of technology. So, with that being said, do you all know what these flock cameras do? I take that as, I'll take that as. So they are, they're stationary cameras that are placed at whatever location that you choose, and what it does is that it reads the license plates of vehicles that come in and out. That's all it does, reads the license plate, snaps a photo. The other thing that it does is, if you have a sex offender that is traveling through this area, if you have someone who has a felony warrant that's attached to their, their license plate, anything that they are a wanted person, whether it's an illegal immigrant, whether it's someone with a child porn warrant, you name it, we've caught them. It gives us more eyes in places where we've only got, at least at Farmington, there's maybe five of us that are working in a city of twenty thousand people, that has well more than that during the daytime. So when we have a known fugitive that comes into town, just wanted for something like that, we're on it. We've had great success with this program, uh, we've had the flock cameras for, I think, about three and a half years now, and a lot of our apprehensions come from this system.
Do you like place them at the entrance of your city?
Generally, it, it is up to.
Yeah, they talked to us, Lisa Dunn from Flock came down to talk to us, school's getting six of them, uh, we wanna get two, we wanna get one out here by the highway by Walmart, and then, uh, one in another location that's yet to be determined, uh, but like I said, it's not taking pictures of people unless you got a license plate stapled to your forehead. It's, that's what it's doing, it's running the plate, like you said, and it's just, uh, I was talking to his chief, uh, Friday morning, and it just, it's, it's changing the way that they're doing business. And it's just, it really is, and I, we're not asking, I'm not asking for like Farmington, how many cameras do you guys think you have now on phase two? A lot.
Twelve.
But, but we're not asking for that, we're, we wanna start with a couple, um, I have money in my, I have money in my budget for, um, for the cameras, I wanna be able to use that for that, but that's, it's just gonna be a tool for us, and as we're moving, as we're building a new PD, it's gonna be an opportunity to implement this now, but we don't have to change all that later. They pick up expired plates and such as well, or?
No.
Okay.
So, it's. When, when these, when these plates pass through that field division, the only thing it checks is the National Crime Information Center to see if there is some sort of wanted flag to it, like I said, it could be a warrant for arrest, uh, you know, a deported felon. Anything that, if we got a warrant for them at their house, that when they type it into the computer database that already exists, it would be no different than if I was driving behind your car and just ran the play on my radio.
We used them then when we had the fifteen-year-old girl that went missing, we had flyers, we canvassed town and knocked on every door. We used it, there was an adult male from Perry County that, um, that people said was over here that she had relations with, uh, but they were able to go make contact with him, and he gave a story to the Highway Patrol and to the FBI, I was in St. Louis yesterday, so they got on Flock and they pulled his, put a description on his car, plate number, and they said, which way did you go, and he told them, and they looked on the flock cameras, and there he was, and they were able to zoom in and see he was alone, I mean, it's a tool, but it's just, they're able to, you know, make him credible in that situation that turned our leads to some, you know, our, all our attention to somewhere else, to actually find the girl. Anyway, that's, I wanted Brian to come down, because like I said, they use them every day, and it's just a, a great tool to have for our department. Smarter, not harder, that's the way technology and everything's going. So, so let me ask a question, if an individual with, let's just paint a bad picture, a violent warrant, violent criminal warrant, they come to town, you're gonna get an alert, I assume? Absolutely. Can you go find him? Right. Do you have to have cause to pull him over, or is that the cause enough to say this person's, the person who this vehicle's registered to, we can go pull him over? Friday, when I talk to his chief, he may be able to, because he uses this, his chief said Ryan uses this all the time. Uh, I was told that it's send a picture of the, the vehicle and a direction of travel, is that what it does?
Yes, so, the way the cameras are set up, it's only gonna be two ways, so it's not gonna be in an intersection or anything like that. What you run into in a situation like you described, law enforcement has a duty to establish that if this warrant is for Kevin Jones, who is a white male, and we see this vehicle go by, and it's a black female just driving the car, we can't stop it. We have to be reasonably sure that the person in the vehicle matches that description. Now, if we stop it, it's for Kevin Jones, but Travis Parker is the one in the vehicle, okay, sorry about you, like, we'll let you go. So there is, there's precedent for that, and it doesn't have anything to do with the, the camera system itself, it really just has to do with our obligations as law enforcement of making a reasonable stop.
Where it's not an arrest?
Correct.
I got my bank account, I packed up here to town somewhere last month, they called the, the company called it, calling.
So I guess that's looking at the expense of that, Eric?
Yeah.
Contract totals thirty thousand eight hundred?
Oh, yeah, five-year period.
That's for five years?
Yes.
How do we get seventy-five thousand in discounts, what's that all about?
It has to do with what they're doing right now with the school joining in and our cover, see, we won't be able just to access our cameras, we can access Farmington, anybody that has flock cameras. So the way she explained it to me, like I said, she's a salesman, I wanted to hear from an actual, some, an officer that uses it, and how they, how they, how it works for them and what it does.
You're talking about?
We're talking about just shy of six thousand a year.
About five hundred a month? Is that within your budget?
It is, I have.
Does that tap into any prop fee or money for it?
Right, I have, in my equipment budget, we used five thousand, it was forty-eight hundred, uh, for tasers, and then the other money was gonna go, be allocated for cameras.
Second, that's with you purchasing ammo?
Yes.
So you've got enough ammo to make it five years?
Uh, no, but, uh, I'm, I'm working, trying to work a deal out right now with Enmiel, I'll take care of it.
So is this contract for five years, or is it renewable every year?
It's five-year contract.
A five-year contract?
Yes, sir.
That's twenty-four months after that. So, you do, so you've got the ten, so the ammo budget was ten thousand, we're taking half of that for tasers?
Yes.
That have your equipment budget, but it was also one tasers, right?
No, it was just help.
Half, half of that ammo. Okay, you still got.
Yes, I have, I have funds in there to cover that, but I just wanna, like I said, I wanna bring it to you guys, and like, like Eddie just said, you know, we're, we're getting ready to build the PD, I understand it completely. I don't, I'm not just wanting every little new thing that comes out, this is something that's actually like, it's, it's changing the way they do business.
Some of the St. Francis County departments, do they get, do they use ARPA funds as where these started coming from, I think, because they use ARPA money for some of this?
I'm not sure about that, because the, the sheriff's department only has three of them installed right now, so I, I have to defer to them.
Okay, I was just curious if it really grant, I mean, I don't know, ARPA wasn't really a grant, but, um.
I mean, if, if you can dedicate it to some sort of law enforcement project that's specific to those funds, uh, our sheriff's department has used a lot of those funds to upgrade your jail.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
So this insurance, is it included in that? I see the insurance on the back, two pages, is that extra, or is that included?
Mary did look at that contract, and she asked for extra stuff that is referenced in there, but we did not, we were not given.
Oh, the, the insurance, or if you're, I, I remember what Lisa said, the insurance is that if you use a MODOC pole, or a like stoplight pole, then it has to be, uh, has to be insured in case it falls off, MODOC wants that extra, but if we put it on a city pole, city property, it did not, you know, okay.
So before they vote on this, uh, I mean, first of all, this sounds pretty big brother for Fredericktown, Missouri. I understand what it's proposed to do, and what it's, you know, designed to do, but down the road, I mean, you, you said the government's, basically, the, you know, you're talking about federal, you know, or people that are on all these watch lists already and things like that. What about when the federal government decides that, uh, you know, Joe Blow does some stupid stuff on Facebook and they don't like him anymore, and they decide to put him on one of these lists? And that means the second he pulls into Fredericktown, or Farmington, or wherever he decides to go, he pains and you guys decide to go fuck him or whatever. You guys just don't see nothing wrong with that, because it's, it's all, it's all good, I mean, we deserve, we, we should have a system like that?
I would say there are two things to, to go about a solution for a situation like you're explaining, number one, definitely be on the phone with Jason Smith, calling him up and say, hey buddy, why are we putting people on watch lists that don't need to be there? But two, each state has their own system that connects to the National Crime Database, like I, I had said. Each state has their own laws on how we can do that, so Missouri is, we're much more conservative than some of these other states.
Right now.
Right, right now, I mean, it's, everything changes, but there's a process that all these things have to go by, and it's not the police that does it. These are things that have to be issued by a judge before they can even be put into a system. So I can't get in there and say, you know, Joe Blow is wanted for X, Y, Z, I have to go through a judge who has to issue a warrant before it can be put in that system.
I understand, I just, I, I look at it from harassment standpoint, just in the fact that, I mean, you did give that.
Alright, I have a motion on the floor, we're gonna go have a second. I'll segment. Alright, so a motion to approve the request by Alderman Miller, second by Alderman Polley, all in favor? Any opposed?
Nay.
Alright, um, request for bid approval for solid waste hauling and disposal for landfill.
So, we had a deal open last week, uh, we bid this every three years, uh, we put out a, a, contacts and vendors for both the hauling and disposal. And, uh, try to get as many bids as we can, we did receive, just received, uh, was it four? Uh, disposal and three for haul, so, so we, so we bid it out. There, there, there are two separate bids, but, so we got four bids on the disposal and three bids on the haul, so when it's all said and done, we put summary together, go to the summary page that says bid summary on top, combined is two, it's the one that has the yellow highlight on it. So what you do is, you, you put the, the other little spreadsheet and, and the, and the best combined bid, the lowest combined bid is the one that we, that we recommend. It's not necessarily gonna be the low disposal or the low hauling, it's gonna be the low combination you do. So, at the end of the day, on that bid summary sheet, you know, our, our, our lowest hauling price was from Steve's Hauling in Lexington, and you combine that with the, with the So, at the end of the day, on that bid summary sheet, you know, our, our, our lowest hauling price was from Steve's Hauling, that's the bid, and combine that with a little, little disposal price from Waste Management of Illinois Incorporated, which is over in, over in Illinois, you, you, you could look at it, six, fifty, sixty-six dollars and forty cents a ton.
This is not, we're, we're currently using Timber Ridge, right, is that what we're, because we've had a lot of problems?
No, Timber Ridge is, they're, they are landfill.
You thought that they were the haulers too?
Well, well, we contracted through Timber Ridge, but they've got their own hauler.
Okay.
The haulers were the problem.
Okay.
And it's not Steve's. No. Yeah, so as it turns out, this go around a little bit, the new hauler and the new landfill.
It's crazy, it's cheaper to drive up to Illinois like that, but I guess.
Well, it, the mileage is not a whole lot different. Yeah, the, the, the mileage is not, it's close, I mentioned, it's about a dozen, ten miles difference, I believe, or not, it's. And just, just the way it worked out, it's, it's, uh, kinda, I don't know, it's kinda difficult to deal with, but, you know, fortunately, we can get ahead, we've got some decent. Three haulers and four disposals, that's not too bad, that is, that's, pretty typical of what we see.
All the way to about like fourteen dollars?
Right.
We talked about looking at it again anyways, because we're still the lowest, considerably lower than anywhere around us.
Yeah, never gonna have to, just true.
We have, we have people hauling tractor jacks or, I don't know where, actually in Illinois, so there's a problem somewhere, if I can haul here, we can make sure.
So Tammy, your recommendation should go with the lowest bidder?
Yes, sir, the, yeah, the lowest, the lowest combination, so we would, what we would do is we would, uh, next, next meeting, we would have two contracts, one for the hauler and one for the disposal. And then, yeah, so that's your two separate contracts. So I guess the recommendation would mean is we'll award a contract to Steve's Hauling for the disposal, and Solid Waste Management of Illinois for the disposal.
I make a motion to approve that request to go with the low bid for Steve's Hauling and Waste Management of Illinois, second.
Motion to approve the low bid by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? At number seventeen, request for payment for burst excavating for soft soil remediation for new fire station in the amount of a hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty-eight cents.
Motion to approve that request.
Second, motion to approve the request by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Shankle, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, number eighteen, request to have welcome home veterans ceremony, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, at nine fifteen AM to eleven thirty AM. Closure from the following streets, West Main, South Main, West College, for safety and ease of peature. Is the Wednesday.
It's the same thing they do every year for the, you know, Vietnam veterans welcome home, they shut it down, they just, everybody's at the court square and they shut down the first block of white paint. Yeah, so they just have a ceremony.
Any issues doing that again, chief?
No, sir.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor? Any opposed?
What was the date on that here?
March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, nine fifteen AM to eleven thirty AM. I, I'll just give you a copy of this, Eric, when this meeting's done. Alright, uh, request number nineteen for a temporary picnic license for the Eagles for the NWTF.
Would you like to know what the NWTF is? Sure. So it is the National Alter Confederation.
Okay.
Um, we do a banquet every year, it's a sportsman banquet. Last year we did it at the Eagles, we actually outgrew that venue, so we're gonna do it at the Armory this year. Um, we still wanted to support a local business, so that's why we decided to have the Eagles do it. Um, that way they could have their liquor there, and we do all of the firearms and all of the different things that we rattle off there. There's about a hundred and eighty to two hundred people that attend, um, and we're just looking for some beer.
Move to approve, second. Motion to approve by Alderman Polley, second by Alderman Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, there is no closed session after this meeting, do I have a motion to adjourn the work session? Motion to adjourn the work session by Alderman Shankle, second by Alderman Long, all in favor? Uh, any opposed?